I think so. I get it. I'll try to, I think I did go. I think they should have. Yeah. I don't think you know. Oh, there.
It's like.
Yeah. She learned. Yeah. She.
Well, I never used to feel like.
Yes.
It's true?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes. And they have a person.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Kay is. You like hot guy like.
Oh, okay.
Hey. Hey, did you get your hat off? Yes.
So. Okay. So.
Okay, you can't worry. Um. I'm not. Yeah. Yeah. I'll work on that policy.
Do you like, do you like an RA? Yeah, I think you like lunchtime. Yeah, is that already? I think you, you bet.
No, I mean.
I mean. So.
We should.
That's the.
I'm.
Right. I know. Cause myself is a K.
She's supposed to be.
So we speak to you in the.
I don't know. I don't. Yeah, I see. It was funny. You're, you know.
No, I didn't.
I made a joke about Kay. Yeah, I really did. I thought you were making fun of me.
Did he?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was like, oh, they have two down.
So lots of.
You know what? I'm.
No, it's not. No, it's.
Sure. So yeah. I'm sure.
Come on.
Go.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Ah.
So what you saw is that I guys saw that you.
Sure.
I've been there since all this. When I was just here. After that, just. Yeah. Last. Every time. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, sure. So.
I said, we're, we're watching this beyond. Right. No, I'll go around. She had to call me back. I said, I'll call her. I'm around. You're trouble. Poor guy.
Right, right.
Uh. Uh. Had her coming back. It's just a long reason. Yeah.
No, you like. It's good.
It's long.
The famous. I'm the.
It's. But he doesn't. He's saying. I would help say. Yeah, personally, yeah. I know it's true. It's not like. Yeah, ladies first.
Sorry, I usually grab one.
What's going on?
I guess they're really.
Yeah. She'll like a film.
She was. Really like. It's. I don't know what to predict.
In ten minutes.
How much she could get. Hanging in there.
In ten minutes. No, that's fine.
Yeah, well, yes, and no, yeah. Yeah, I could have, yeah, I could have. I think. No. Because I can't. Like, you either have to adjust that. And then she can do that.
Or you're just.
Let me see. They're probably like, someone's gonna do that now. So it's.
Well, I don't know. Yeah. Do you notice that?
Yeah. Well, at our place. Especially.
Sure. Well, you've known yourself for a while. So you're probably. So you've known yourself for a while. You should probably be a subject. That's.
Well, I'm the, uh, I'm most. I think it's just like.
Authority on my opinion. Yeah.
People want to hear that.
Yeah. Nobody knows. But I'm.
Well, living today. Yeah. Love is on there. Yeah.
Okay, I like.
Just that either you like it or not. Continue with us.
Your, your mocktails are. Bless you.
Yeah, yeah, it's. Very. Like, there's no. Salty or excited. I mean, even quite. Yeah. Most of them. Or. Yeah.
Oh. Are you serious? You're not. Oh, you got. Okay. I am not. You sure? Oh, yeah. Outside.
Everything's very. I'm trying to. Civilized. Yeah.
I don't think.
Well, you don't think. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's good. Do you do? Do you?
I'm doing a little.
I was thinking, but. But. Um, yes. Ah. Sure. I mean, if. You have this relationship with it. I'm thinking.
That developed over the years.
Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty PM. I will call the Tuesday, February sixth, meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please color roll?
President Ladine, Counselor Van Sickle, Counselor Moffett, Counselor Sweeney, Counselor Fennessy, Counselor Elm, Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Herrick, Counselor Johnson, and Vice President Graski.
We have a quorum.
Our first item is three point one is a presentation on the Superior Public Museums with Megan Meyer, Executive Director Brittany Plachekki. And Caitlin Baumann.
All right, thank you for having us this evening. So first, well, we already took care of introductions. So first of all, I wanted to start out by saying thank you to the City of Superior for supporting Superior Public Museums for many years. Um, not only with helping us with plaster work and other, um, fun old building projects that occur. Um, also sponsoring us with the Ice Cream Social, Bayside Sounds, our old Firehouse events, Meteor events. Um, we have a bunch of fun helping with the Lake Superior Ice Festival and hosting all the princesses and princes and fun characters as well as, um, the canine contest. And then also, um, the stipend and capital funding as well. So first I will do. Maybe. There we go. Whoops. Oh, sorry. That was a screen behind. Okay, we'll just skip ahead. All right, so, um, first I'll do a brief overview of all of our sites. So Fairlawn Mansion is the big mansion you see at Long Highway Two that is built between eighteen eighty-eight and eighteen ninety-one by Martin Patterson. He and his wife Grace lived there with their eight children, um, until nineteen eighteen, when Martin passed away. Then Grace moved to California. She deeded the home to be a children's home, otherwise be torn down. So it operated as a children's home from nineteen twenty to nineteen sixty-two, and over two thousand children lived here during that time. Then it was, um, bought by the city to save it from being torn down with a wrecking ball. Was home to the Historical Society and now Superior Public Museums. The SS Meteor Whaleback Ship is the last remaining whaleback ship above water. Um, the whaleback ships were designed by Captain Alexander McDougall. It was built in eighteen ninety-six, right at the American Steel Barge Company, which is now Fraser Shipyards. So it sailed until nineteen sixty-two, when the City of Superior deemed it was too important to dismantle. So it was brought back here with a tugboat, and it's been a site on Barker's Island ever since. And then the Old Firehouse and Police Museum was an operating fire hall for the city from eighteen ninety-eight until nineteen eighty-two. Um, it actually, they're, it replaced a fire hall that burned down diagonal across the road, and Martin Patterson was mayor at the time. So then it was taken over by, um, some local volunteers as a museum, and then Superior Public Museums took it over as well. So I'll turn it over to Caitlin.
Hi, folks. My name is Caitlin Baumann. I'm Board President for Superior Public Museums. The museums were founded in nineteen ninety-nine as a five oh one C three nonprofit. As we know, the city owns the three museums, and we were established to oversee the operations of said museums through a memorandum of understanding. The mission of Superior Public Museums, as you can see on our slide here, is to preserve, maintain, and develop those City of Superior museums. Um, to really bring out a better understanding and appreciation of their history and heritage for the citizens of the City of Superior, Douglas County, and the State of Wisconsin. A little bit about our Board of Directors. We currently have a ten-member board and can have up to fifteen members. Our bylaws detail that the board should have fourteen at-large directors and one representative of the city council. So our current representative is Brent Fennessy. In recent years, we've also had Nick Ladine on our board and Tyler Elm. Our meetings are open, and all are welcome to attend and learn more about Superior Public Museums. And we are currently looking for new board members with expertise in human resources, finance, grant writing, and a current or retired member of lawn enforcement. Our board comes from a diverse background of industries, um, and perspectives. We value this conversation to really support, to drive that mission of Superior Public Museums. While discussing our board, I'd like to publicly thank Kelly Peterson for her many, many, many years on the Superior Public Museums Board. Um, she recently did step down. And also wanted to publicly congratulate our board member Emily Shaneborn on the birth of her recent baby, Mason.
All right, so I'll quickly overview our staff. So myself, Megan Meyer, I'm the Executive Director. I'm coming up on six years already in this role. Um, Brittany Plachekki is our museum manager, so she mainly oversees our collections as well, um, as our staffing and tours. Cindy Smith and Valerie Burke, Brook, Burke, sorry, are our administrative assistants. They share that role for the part-time position. Um, they're your main point of contact if you call the museums. And then we have Erin Cavisto, who is our part-time maintenance coordinator as well, plus all of our wonderful tour guides. So I was gonna give a brief overview of our visitor numbers. You do have our recent annual report that was just approved by the board last week. And we have copies of that, and there's additional ones over there. Um, so we have our visitor numbers from twenty twenty-three and versus twenty twenty-two. So we're pretty steady amongst those years. You'll see a slight dip in the Meteor. That is some of it because the urban was actually closed for a while, um, while they were getting work done. So we kind of had an uptick in member, um, visitors there. But we're keeping steady, growing back again after the pandemic. So, um, we're still the places they want to visit in Superior. We're gonna be doing a lot more, um, advertising this upcoming year. We'll talk about in a little bit. Um, we do have, we continue to do the Pass program with the library. It's a fantastic program. We do that along with the Bong Center, um, where if you're a member of the library, you can check out passes and visit any of our sites for free for tours. Um, we have a lot of people that homeschool. There are, um, children that use the passes. If you have family coming into town, whatnot, you can definitely check those out and come visit. It's a great way to visit, um, the museums locally. And you can see our revenues versus expenses for twenty twenty-three as well. Um, I won't go into details there, but you can see, um, our revenue actually was up quite a bit for tours this year as well as, um, our memberships, too. We grew our memberships quite a bit. And again, you can look in your, um, annual report to see the differences over the last four years.
Um, we have been coming up with some fun new ways to engage kids as they go through our sites. Um, these little searches, we will have little plushes or little toys throughout the museums for kids to be looking for. It gets them a little more engaged with the subject matter. Um, it's been massively popular with kids, but also adults. I've had several come through and ask to also do that. Um, and then we've been making some things in-house as well. So we have our cute little histories for everyone button, but we also have site-specific buttons, too. So they're, they've been fun to make.
So you can see our memberships are, um, have grown since last year. We've incorporated corporate memberships over the last couple of years. You can see our corporate members there. You can see, obviously, Tyler's Discover PC on there and a lot of wonderful local businesses that we work with. Um, our benefactors are those who have our highest level of membership. So included with that, they also go to behind-the-scenes tours. So we like to recognize them, um, for going above and beyond with supporting our museums. So here are programs and events and conferences and off-site activities that we participate in. So we have those all listed for Fairlawn. Our most popular one, the murder mystery dinners. They sell out. So if you've ever wanted to attend one, pretty much the minute you see it on Facebook, buy your tickets. Um, otherwise, you'll be on a waiting list with like fifty-plus people. Um, our Members Only Night we've incorporated recently, that's been a lot of fun and a great turnout for that as well. So we offer, well, you know, a good variety of some free events as well as paid events. Um, we've done some wonderful partnership, partnerships with Superior Porch Fest at the Meteor and at the Old Firehouse and Police Museum. Um, we're starting to do some off-site, um, presentations to schools. And then we've also, obviously, attended local, um, conferences, um, regional conferences, and participate with other, some other local attractions, too.
Um, at the museums, we are always finding new things, learning new things about our sites. Things are always changing. Some of the most recent things that we have brought out, um, you can see on the left there, one of my favorite items is the original Fairlawn tapestry. It actually used to hang in the landing. This tapestry is an obuson tapestry, um, in the rococo style, and it was actually made in seventeen ninety. So it predates the State of Wisconsin by over fifty years. Um, it was presumed lost until twenty nineteen, where it was found at the Douglas County Historical Society. So this was a really great collaborative opportunity for us to work with the Historical Society to show this off. Um, it also gave us the opportunity to do some really, um, important preservation work. The piece itself is in pretty rough shape. Um, prior to us taking over and like in the interim between when it was a museum and when it was a children's home, the piece had some substantial decay. We actually, in twenty nineteen, took it to Midwest Conservators in the cities to get an estimate on what reparations would be. Um, we would love to eventually have this on display permanently. Um, so that is, that's been one of the most exciting things that we have rolled out. Um, we also have been able to show off a whole new bedroom at Fairlawn. So that is the bedroom that belonged to Lois, the youngest daughter of the Patterson family. It also may have been used as a sickroom at some point, and it features one of the original fireplaces. Um, we also secured the bell for the SS Thomas Wilson, which is another whaleback. Um, and then we have been working on doing some restoration on the third floor and bringing back one of the original bathrooms. So we're still working on getting that up, but that will be the only bathroom that we have, so people will be very excited about it. Um, but we've also, we took off some wood paneling that was put up in the seventies in the original lift, and we have been able to expose the original wood, which is still in excellent shape. So it's been a great opportunity to teach people to, um, this would have originally moved between the first and the second floor to help, um, with the staff to move linens and things like that around the house. Um, and then we've also converted one of our display cases to an exhibit specifically showing off items from the Patterson family. Um, you can see on the far left there, there's actually a nightgown that would have been worn by Martin. And if you look at it really close, if you come here, which you should, there is, um, some marks where you can see that there was repairs done. So darning, which is really super cool.
So one of my absolute favorite things that happened this past year, so if you were at the Fourth of July Parade in Superior would have seen the nineteen forty-four Mack fire truck up and running again. So it was a huge effort, um, by our retired fire captain, Chris Opheim, um, mechanic Jason King, and local member John Freer. It was a blast, and we'll have it out hopefully again a lot more next year, too. Obviously, we can't have it in parades where it's like over ninety-seven degrees. So hopefully, it's a beautiful day like it was last year, and you'll see it out in about town. Um, one of our board members, Dave Dale Kojal, is involved with the Great Lakes Shipwreck and Preservation Society. So he does a lot of restoration during the work weekend. And he took over redoing, um, the ramp that goes through the fuel bunker. So we have much more a guided path and a much safer pathway for guests to walk on. And also, the Lake Superior Master Gardeners do a fantastic job with our gardens. They were absolutely beautiful this year. Something super cool is a couple of years ago, Captain Alexander McDougall, who is originally from Scotland, was, um, showcased in History Scotland Magazine. Super fun article, so if anybody would like to read that, please reach out. So now McDougall's dream would obviously to have the Meteor up and running full speed again, but obviously, that can happen, but we'll get close. So we had the lifeboats covered. Um, B Designs did that. And then we are super close, thank you to ABB Motors, to have the triple expansion Steve mentioned, original to the Meteor, up and running again for tours. So our goal is to have that happening for this summer. It did probably fifteen, twenty years ago, um, but there has had, have had to have been repairs done to it. So that will be amazing to be able to see that running again. So I wanted to quick touch base on the Capitol Projects. You can see the projects that the City of Superior has supported in the past with the windows at Fairlawn, um, some spot painting, foundation waterproofing, um, and re-roofing in the touch-up and boiler replacement. So Fairlawn is in dire need of repainting the exterior. Um, these are some close-ups I took when I was up in the, um, Widow's Walk. Um, there are pieces that are rotting. It hasn't had much work done on it since the restoration in the nineteen nineties. It would be an extensive project, but the longer it waits, there are more repair that's gonna need to be done. Um, the parking lot has lots of dips and whatnot. The city has done some minor repairs, but that's looking like to be revamped and looked at, some other options. Um, shifting of the home, because, you know, it's like a hundred and thirty-seven years old. Um, repairing the doors there, continued restoration. Um, we had some water leakage that did damage to the carriage entrance. Long time happening. It finally showed its nasty side, so hopefully that's resolved. Um, and I, my ultimate goal is to have a replica of the carriage house where we can have our offices and everything and in controlled storage. SS Meteor has actually not had Capitol Projects done. Props to the Great Lakes Shipwreck and Preservation Society and the other organizations that started the work weekend. The Meteor would not be in the condition it's in now without them. However, the City of Superior has always been a great supporter of our volunteers. Um, we're working on that National Parks Historic Landmark designation, which hopefully would open up some federal funding. Um, I've made some connections with the State Historical Society to move forward with that again, to continue on what Sarah Blank had done. Um, it's obviously our most historically significant museum, um, not only to Superior of the state, but maritime history throughout the world. And then the Old Firehouse and Police Museum. The hose tower windows have been done and the concrete apron were the recent projects. Um, the roof, flat roof is in dire need of replacement. Um, the boilers get into that age, like boilers do. Some tuck pointing, um, and the block windows need some work. Um, the carriage house that's on the property, which is not part of the museum, original museum, but it's on the property. Um, we have to look at what we want to do with that as well, and then the future of it, um, which we'll talk about next.
Since my tenure on the Board of Directors, we've been discussing our need and desire to have a comprehensive strategic plan for the organization. Under Megan's leadership and with the strong support of the board, this is coming to fruition this year, so we're very excited about this opportunity. We began the process earlier this year, and we'll be working through it, um, throughout this, rest of this, um, calendar year. We've hired Superior Effect Marketing to assist us in navigating this critical process. Part of this process will be a survey that will be distributed to key stakeholders. Um, so just wanting to flag this for you all as city council members, as the mayor, Historic Society, members of the chamber. Um, this will go out to a diverse group of folks in the community, and we really value your feedback, um, in taking that survey. So when it comes to you all, we'd want to hear your thoughts and that future direction and mission, um, for Superior Public Museums.
All right, last slide here, just some things that are happening in the spring, so great ways to support the museums. We have Culvers Nights coming up, um, one for each site, White Winter Winery. We're doing some history talks, um, so you can see those there as well. And we have our Children's Home Easter and Peep Art Contest happening again, Tea with Authors, local authors will come to Fairlawn. And then we did a paranormal investigation last weekend, and we're gonna do a reveal on what they've found. I don't even know fully yet, so, um, watch for those coming up. And again, thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments for the museums? If not, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, I just have one question. Years ago, there was talk about the foundation, you know, the bottom of the whaleback. Has that been repaired, or is it still good? Or is it, I know years ago, they talked about raising the, the ship, you know, from, from underneath the ground. So are, are we still okay there? Is the bottom of the ship still okay there?
There has not been a study done since that previous study, and I can't recall what year it was. Um, as far as I know, there has not been significant changes in that, but then again, I'm not an architect by any means. Um, so hopefully, with that national landmark, we'll be able to get some funding to do more studies and things like that, so.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you again.
All right, item four point one is the approval of the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting minutes.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Herrick. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item six point one is a report from Mayor Payne.
Uh, counselors, I've spoken about the ARPA budget at every meeting for the last few meetings, certainly all of them this year. Uh, tonight is the, really the final deadline to speak to me about things you'd like to see in the, in that budget. I can't promise it's coming to the next meeting, but I hope to meet with Director Reinhardt this week to, to put our final budget together that we will present to you, that I hope will be the final ARPA budget. If you have spoken to me, rest assured, I, I have notes on our meetings. Uh, I can't guarantee everything that you've requested will be in that budget, but as I said to you both publicly and in many of our individual meetings, uh, just because it's not in this particular budget doesn't mean we can't fund it. By far, the most important thing with this budget will be that we can spend it quickly. Not only do we need to commit the funds by the end of twenty twenty-four, but Director Reinhardt and I would really just like to just be done with this money, to have it spent as quickly as possible. Uh, the accounting alone for such significant amounts of federal money is somewhat burdensome on the finance department. So we, uh, we hope to release that at the next meeting. I'll linger, obviously, at the end of the meeting. If you have any last thoughts, please come up to me tonight. I mean, of course, if you reach out to me in the next day or two, there's always a shot, but as early as tomorrow, I could be in Director Reinhardt's office. And when that's done, I'd, I'd really like it to be done. Of course, I'll turn it over to you, and then it will be yours to adopt, amend, reject. Uh, but again, if you haven't brought up a new project, that can receive a contract, have the money spent in twenty twenty-four. I know you've heard me say we have until the end of twenty twenty-six. We do, but we definitely need it committed via a contract or some other very formal form of commitment. And again, we'd really like to get the money completely spent by the end of twenty-four. Obviously, some projects will linger, but any questions on that? If not, that is all I have.
All right, item seven point one is the business of the Human Resources Committee with a meeting held on January twenty-second. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, thank you. Um, at our January twenty-second meeting, um, you'll see before you that, um, we approved the recommendation to fill, um, two light equipment operators on the Parks and Rec and two seasonals. Um, a little bit of history. Um, the way a community presents itself can be an important factor in courting new businesses, tourists, and even workers who, who consider quality of life when seeking a job. Adding trees, shrubs, and perennial greenery to add a sense of welcoming place was a big part of both Tower Avenue and Bellknap Streets reconstruction. However, for the past several years, we have been searching for the best way, uh, to maintain that landscaping investment. The council ranked additional Parks, Rec, and Forestry Crew members as its number one priority during our priorities-based budgeting process as the best way to keep the greenery along our two main business arteries healthy and striving. I hope the council still feels, um, this way, um, as what you see before you tonight is the approval, um, for those two full-time and three, um, seasonal Parks and Rec Crew Member positions. And I will, um, turn it back to you to read the recommendations. Thank you.
All right, item one is to approve a request to fill two new light equipment operator Parks, Recreation, and Forestry positions to assist with landscape maintenance on the Tower and Bellknap Corridors. These are regular, full-time benefited positions that are included in the twenty twenty-four budget.
Recommendation to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Graski. Is that just number one? Uh, all those, eh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
The second recommendation is to approve a request to fill three new seasonal laborer Parks, Recreation, and Forestry positions to assist with the landscape maintenance on the Tower and Bellknap Corridors. These are seasonal non-benefited positions that are included in the twenty twenty-four budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion is by Counselor Ludwig, second by Counselor Elm. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item seven point three is the business of the Finance Committee with a meeting held on January eleventh. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, thank you very much. We have two items that have to be voted on, and the third item is of interest. We are looking at the outdoor water usage, um, policy, and we haven't made a decision on that, but we're reviewing that for either next month or the month after. And so the two items that need approval tonight are, number one is the. And so the two items that need approval tonight are, number one is the approval of the 2024 Liability Insurance Fund Budget. And number two is approve the 2023 grant for the Douglas County Historical Society for an amount of $20,000. So I also will turn it back to the clerk for the vote, please. Thank you.
All right, I'll read both.
There's any ques-- excuse me, one second. Any questions? I'll certainly try and answer them from anyone. Thank you.
Are there any immediate questions? Counselor Van Sickle?
No questions, just an abstention, please, on item 1.
All right, I'll read. Item number 1 is to approve the 2024 Liability Insurance Fund Budget.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Johnson. The record will reflect Counselor Van Sickle's abstention. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 2 is to approve the 2023 Nonprofit Grant Application for the Douglas County Historical Society in the amount of $20,000.
The motion is by Counsel Fennessey, second by Counsel Herrick. Counsel Moffett.
Mayor Payne, members of the council, please let the record show that I'm abstaining from this item.
The record shall so reflect your abstention. Counselor Grasky.
Please also show that I will be abstaining from this.
Record will also reflect Counsel Grasky's abstention. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the grant, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
All right, item 7.5 is the business of the Public Safety Committee with a meeting held on January 18th. Is there a report from the Chair?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Chair. At the Public Safety Committee, a few things were discussed. We have our first wave of hybrids finally coming for the police department. That is a long time coming, so good news there. Secondly, from the fire department, we are starting the discussion on the purchasing of the electric fire rig. We had a long discussion on that in public safety. And that will be moving on to the Finance Committee for discussion as to how to pay for it. It is quite expensive. On top of that, you see the approval item for professional service agreements for the Fire Station 3 remodel. And I will make, well, I will answer any questions if there are any. If not, I will make a motion to approve the recommendation.
The motion is by Counsel LeDeen to approve the recommendation for the agreement. Is there a second? Second is by Counsel Johnson. Discussion. Hearing, Counsel Sweeney.
I just have one question on the engineering/architectural firm we picked. I noticed in the medits it said they're from Madison. Is their office out of Madison? Is that the one we're working with, or Minneapolis?
Yes.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay.
Just for the recording, the fire chief said Madison and the Twin Cities is where the office is.
So in picking that firm, I gather that they were the expert in that area for designing?
Very much so, Chief, if you want to. Very much.
Chief, could I ask you to come to the podium, just so we can get on the recording?
Yeah, they were chosen based on their experience working with fire stations, both on new stations as well as renovation of stations, while stations were occupied, which is going to be the situation that's going to occur with Station 3 is. The station will be active and operational while the renovation is occurring.
So you probably know my next question. Was that the low bid?
Okay, your mic, Chief.
We did a request for qualifications and then did the bid package through Contract Analyst Darwin. And looking at the prices that they gave us, it fell well within the rate that Contract Analyst Darwin is used to, and actually was on the low end of things. We're fairly aggressive with their price package.
My only comment is, and we don't have to accept a low bid, I understand, a RFP or whatever, but if we don't, we should put language always in there, why we picked not the low bidder. I know it was an RFP, okay, I got that, but still, I think it's good policy just to put some verbiage in there, say we picked because of their expertise in designing fire halls. That may be, the others didn't have that. I don't know that, but I think it's critical we add that information.
Further discussion. Counsel Johnson.
I know that in the priority-based budgeting, we talked about 2 and 3. Could you just speak, I know you mentioned, we talked about this at the Public Safety Meeting, but could you talk about why we decided to just do the station first and not both of them at the same time?
Right now, Station 3 is in better condition than Station 2, and I think the service of that we have at Station 3, the building itself is functional, and it serves the purpose on East End Fire Station. Station 2, I think, needs a further in-depth look at whether or not the building is beyond the point of renovation, and then also, does that design of the building fit the needs of the current north-end situation?
Any further discussion or questions for the fire chief or the Chair? Hearing none. The motion is to approve the agreement with OPN Architects. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1.1 is the business of the Plan Commission with a meeting held on January 17th. Is there a report from the Chair?
Yes, Counselors, there's only one item of business before you from the Plan Commission, but the last commission meeting was a rather lengthy meeting where we had an extensive conversation about the proposed gas plant on the Namaji River. And we recorded that meeting, and I would encourage, I believe most of you were there or watched it. Members of the public have not seen it. That is available on the city's website. I expect we will have further conversations. I don't, I can't say right now whether the next Plan Commission meeting will host another conversation, but I expect many more at the Plan Commission. So I will try to give you notice when we are going to be talking about this subject. I know you all care a great deal about it. So I'll give you a heads-up when that's the case. Those always, of course, or almost always follow our second council meeting of the month, so I should be able to give you plenty of notice. Otherwise, the recommendation is to approve a special use permit for a mobile kiosk at 5701 Tower. A relatively minor change to the usage of the area to allow an ice machine, I believe. You want to read the resolution? I better have the clerk actually read the resolution.
I'll read it.
Grasky, is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.2 is reports without recommendations. At this time, are there any other committee or commission reports to be made?
Hearing none, we can move on.
All right, new business. Item 10.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
The motion is by Counsel Herrick, second by Counsel Johnson. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.2, I am recommending approval of an application by Walmart Stores East LP to appoint Kyle Reese as an agent for the remainder of their license period expiring June 30th, 2024.
Motion is by Counsel Deen, second by Counsel Ludwig. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.3, Planning Economic Development and Port Director CIRC recommends approval of the release of utility easements in previously vacated property at 21st Street and Stinson Avenue.
Motion is by Counsel Fennessey, second by Counsel Elm. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.4, Planning Economic Development and Port Director CIRC recommends approval of a resolution setting a public hearing on February 20th, 2024 for adoption of a final resolution on the proposed issuance by the City of Superior of its multifamily housing revenue note Series 2024 to be issued in one or more series of tax-exempt and/or taxable bond to Royalton Associates 2 LP in an amount not to exceed $20 million to finance the acquisition, rehabilitation, and equipping of an existing residential rental development known as Royalton Manor Apartments located at 1901 New York Avenue.
Okay, Counselors, before I ask you for a motion here, I wanted to introduce this a little bit. The main question, of course, on whether to approve the actual financing will come at the next meeting. This resolution will only set a necessary public hearing. That said, I know there've been a number of questions about Royalton Manor. I have met with a number of people, including residents at Royalton Manor, and I know there's still a lot of questions. It's possible there are people here tonight to speak about it, and I'll open that up in a moment. But I wanted to give some background, at least, on what is happening at Royalton Manor. This financing will allow the sale of the building to a new owner. Director CIRC and I have spoken with him on a number of occasions, including one final time today to get a little bit more clarity and to make sure I can say what I'm about to say, which is the new company, and I apologize that I'm forgetting their name right now, I should have written that down, is, has considerable experience in operating similar venues for primarily 55 years of age and up in that housing. However, I know that causes a great deal of stress to folks in Royalton Manor, because many of them are under the age of 55. But these properties, including this one, also allow people that have waivers for disabilities and relevant HUD-approved vouchers for those buildings. What that means is, as the new owners come in, they will be carrying out a full renovation of the building. This is a renovation without displacement or a live-in renovation, where, you know, for the example they give, is they do a piecemeal renovation of the apartments themselves. So if your bathroom's going to be renovated, they ask you to move out from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for one day, renovate your bathroom, invite you back into your home, and then a couple of weeks later, do that with the kitchen, et cetera. Most folks, we believe, and we can't say anything for sure right now, most folks will remain in their housing in Royalton Manor. They almost, most of them almost certainly qualify under the new owner, and there would be no reason to remove them just because there's a new owner. The new owner will also be making a number of improvements to the building. I'll let them speak to that at the next meeting. But one of the more significant changes that we would see at the building that will help our police and fire departments protect the space is permanent day-to-day staffing in the building, which is something that's absent now. So there would be more onsite monitoring than currently exists. So going back to the possibility of displacement, we can't guarantee that nobody will be displaced. I have to be honest about that. We don't expect many, possibly none, to be displaced from that building. In the event that happens, that is not a quick process. The number they gave us was six to nine months, but they won't even close on the property until mid-March. And then they would meet directly with tenants, one-on-one, review leases, review their individual situations. In the event that the law prohibits somebody from living in the housing under the new contract, then it'd be about a six-to-nine-month process to help them find new housing. The new owners are committed to providing direct assistance in finding that. The city is also committed to that. As most of you know, we have had to evict folks from city-owned housing in the past, most recently in downtown Mobile Home Park. We move very slowly in that process, and of course, we provide financial assistance to help folks as they relocate. It's not a fixed program. We cater that to individual folks' needs. So I know there's a lot of stress to the folks living there, so I wanted to make sure to say that publicly, and that folks will have a chance to ask questions tonight. I don't know how many answers we're going to give you tonight, but we will definitely be prepared to answer all of your questions at the next meeting, as well as any questions folk that arise in the actual public hearing at our next meeting. So before I ask for your questions or a motion, is there anybody from the public that's come to speak directly about Royalton Manor? If not, hey, would you please read the resolution?
All right, 10.4. Planning Economic Development and Port Director CIRC recommends approval of a resolution setting a public hearing for February 20th, 2024 for adoption of a final resolution on the proposed issuance by the City of Superior of its multifamily housing revenue note Series 2024 to be issued in one or more series of tax-exempt and/or taxable bonds to Royalton Associates 2 LP in an amount not to exceed $20 million to finance the acquisition, rehabilitation, and equipping of an existing residential rental development known as Royalton Manor Apartments located at 1901 New York Avenue.
Motion is by Counsel Johnson, second by Counsel Moffett. Questions or discussion? Counsel Elm.
All right, I guess this is new to me, because I had learned about this through a social media post. And I'm in need of more details about this company. This is an Illinois company, Royalton Associates. I don't know if that was generated just for this specific project. By the title of it, it seems like that. But this is a $20 million bond, and I'm uncertain how much of this will go towards the acquisition of the building versus the actual improvements of that. And I'm not sure of the total improvement cost, so I'm curious of, just a little more detail of who this company is and how they're.
Unless you don't have anything to say right now, do you? Further questions or discussion? And again, please feel free, as Counsel Elm did, ask the question, even if we can't answer it now, it'll make them more prepared to answer at the next meeting. Counsel Sweeney.
Okay, thank you. I have, unlike, I learned about this at a late inning. So, but I have, of course, questions. First of all, is this company independent of the current owner? There's no relationship between the two, or is there?
That is correct. They are independent.
Independent?
Of the current company, yes.
Thank you. Is there going to be, from what I understand, this isn't at market then, right?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
I'm sorry?
Could you clarify your question?
At market, meaning if a rent for an apartment is a dollar, we're going to get a dollar, or is it all subsidized?
Oh, that's, this is subsidized housing.
Hundred percent.
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. And then is there, from what I hear you saying, there's going to be a mixed population in there? By that, I mean, are some people 55 or over, they're there because they're 55 and over, okay? That's what I understand. Plus, anybody else may have some, and I don't know the correct terminology, but I'll classify it under some kind of special needs. Are those, is that a mixed population that you're referring to?
That is my understanding right now, but I think that's an important question to clarify.
Okay.
My understanding is that it is a mixed population now, will remain a mixed population after the sale, but we'll definitely clarify that.
Okay, all right, thank you. I've got many other questions, but I'll ask them later. Thanks.
Counselors, I also want to reiterate that the city is not issuing these bonds, okay? It says that in the resolution. It shouldn't, actually. The reason we're here today, remember when we did this for Frazier a couple of months ago? These folks are going out, they're getting money from another agency. The statute says the municipality, Douglas County and the city where the project is located, have to acknowledge that this is happening. We can issue revenue bonds as well. We can make money on those revenue bonds. That's why we have to, the statute has said, we have to acknowledge that. So that's essentially why I wanted to make that perfectly clear to everybody, that we are not the issuers of these bonds. So we are essentially going to acknowledge at the public hearing, and you're going to hopefully give permission to the mayor next month, or next, in the next meeting, to sign off on a certificate to allow this to continue to move forward. That's what we're here today to do. Further, Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you for that clarification, because that's a huge difference. So then does, so this is just more of a formality. It's just us saying we don't want to bond the money, and we're going to allow the state to do it?
I think it's fair to describe it that way, Counselor, but I, as with Frazier, I wanted to be both careful and clear with the council that you are authorizing it, and it's, you could deny it for any, almost any reason, really, so including if you didn't value the project. That's an option. So it's not, voting for it is not necessarily a statement of support of the company or of the project. It's just authorizing the money, declining to issue the bonds ourselves. But you do have the option to say, well, we don't trust this project developer, and therefore, I don't want to approve the financing. So you're correct, but counselors can make their own decision for why they vote to approve it or not.
Okay, so then where the, and 10.4, where it's worded incorrectly, does that have to be amended?
I would recommend that we insert Public Finance Authority in place of City of Superior. That would be my recommendation. Would anybody be interested in making that amendment?
I will.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Me.
Counsel Fennessey made the motion to amend. Counsel Johnson made the second to strike the word "City of Superior" and replace with "Public Finance Authority."
Would that be the state Public Finance Authority?
It's actually a broader regional Public Finance Authority. It started in Wisconsin, so that makes it a little bit confusing, but it moves well beyond the Wisconsin borders, yes. It's a private corporation or a private financing authority that was formed by municipalities to increase the bonding power of large projects that, so that they didn't have to pursue direct municipal bonds. Okay, the question is on whether to amend, so if you have questions on the broad resolution, any further discussion on the motion to amend by striking and replacing? Counsel Sweeney? Okay, all those in favor of approving the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The main motion, as I said. The main motion as amended, Counselor Johnson.
Thanks for that clarification. That was going to be one of my first ones. You know, one of the, you know, working in the field of folks with special needs or disabilities, oftentimes, we we ask for advocates to come into meetings with with us. Are they planning to have any advocates for the residents during those renter meetings? Or are there resources that we could provide as a city for those renters?
I think that's an important question that we'll ask them. I can say that they have, they've done this before with other projects, and they've worked with a similar population at other units where, so they have a common practice of meeting with them. But that's, I think that's an important question to ask, how those meetings will be conducted and who will be with them.
And then there will, will there be like a, I heard you say one-on-one meetings, where there'll be a a general meeting for everyone to get some questions answered as well?
Yes, and I I think I probably should have said individual evaluations of leases and situations. Obviously, if there had to be a material change, if somebody had to be displaced or moved, I would assume that's definitely a one-on-one meeting, but they specifically committed to group meetings with tenants.
Okay. I I think I have some other questions, but maybe I'll I'll email them in advance in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vensick?
Thank you, Chair. Yep, just along those same lines, in terms of making sure that the renovation will do no community harm. So if people must be removed, what is that criteria? And and do they have references or letters of support from past companies that they've worked with on similar projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sweeney? Please.
Thank you. Just one question. At any time, is the Superior, the city going to be liable for any amount of money?
My understanding is no. I'll I'll ask the Finance Director again as the actual question comes up. The answer was no during the Frazier question. My understanding is it remains no for this financing, but the Director Reinhardt said no. Counselor Fennessey?
Just one more question. Where, this is an out-of-town company, right?
Yes.
Do you know, have they committed to using local contractors for the renovations, or are they going to be bringing in their out-of-town crew?
I didn't really talk about the nature of the renovations. They offered what what I offered earlier, that they are about the the fact that the renovations don't displace people, but I haven't even asked the full scope of the renovations yet. So that's an important question for the next meeting as well.
The next meeting, okay, perfect, thanks.
Further questions or discussion? The resolution, again, will set a public hearing at the next council meeting on February twentieth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item ten point five, I am recommending approval of an original Class A beer and Class A liquor cider-only license application for C A P L Retail LLC, doing business as Joe's Quick Mart's located at three eleven Belknap Street for a period beginning on February ninth, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessey, second by Counselor Herrick. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point six, I am recommending approval of original Class A beer and Class A liquor cider-only license application for C A P L Retail LLC, doing business as Joe's Quick Mart's located at four oh six Belknap Street for a period beginning on February ninth and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessey, second by Counselor Grasky. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item ten point seven, I am recommending approval of a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license application for the Richard I Bond Veterans Historical Center located at three oh five Harborview Parkway for Escape the Bond to be held on February ninth through the eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion is by Counselor Grasky, second by Counselor Moffett. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Counselors, we have a number of folks signed up to speak in public comment. In a moment, I'll call up the first person. I'll read these in order. Reminder that folks, as you speak in public comment, you have three minutes and three minutes only. That rule is strictly enforced unless the council amends it. I will give you a thirty-second warning at the two-minute-and-thirty-second mark. And as a favor, I also ask, if I pronounce your name correctly or have trouble reading it, there's a few that I'm not a hundred percent certain of, please state your name again when you come up to the podium. The first person is Kent Miller.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Good evening, Mayor Payne and members of the Superior City Council. My name is Kent Miller, and I'm the president and business manager of the Wisconsin Labor's District Council. My union represents nearly nine thousand skilled union laborers throughout Wisconsin, including nearly seventy-five members who live in the City of Superior and two hundred in Douglas County. I am here today to speak in support of the Namaeji Trail Energy Center and the positive impact that it will have for Superior and Northwest Wisconsin. The close-to-billion-dollar Entech project will be one of the largest private investments in the history of Douglas County, which will be a catalyst for creating good-paying union jobs that add health and retirement benefits through the utilization of a private project labor agreement. The amount of investment that is being made with this project, along with President Biden's recent announcement of the full reconstruct of the Blatnick Bridge connecting Superior to Duluth, means that there's going to be a significant demand for careers in construction. These two projects are a huge economic shot in the arm for Northwest Wisconsin. The Entech project alone will create up to three hundred and fifty construction jobs and will take a few years to complete. This will provide a pathway for new people to become apprentices and pursue a career in construction. The great wages and locally hired members of Launa will make not only help increase the local tax base, but also be reinvested in the community at grocery stores, restaurants, taverns, and other small businesses. The construction of the Entech facility will provide energy security for Superior and surrounding communities in Northwest Wisconsin, all while reducing the overall carbon emissions that otherwise would be created using legacy energy production fuels like coal. Entech will also have the ability in the future to use a mix of hydrogen and natural gas to power homes and businesses. As I mentioned earlier in my remarks, the investments being made in local infrastructure projects will be transformative for Superior and Douglas County. Significant investments in infrastructure, including an efficient and steady supply of power, will help build the local economy where businesses can expand and entrepreneurs can create a new business, and families have greater opportunity. I appreciate your time to hear me talk about how this project will have a positive impact, not only on helping grow local union jobs in the community and building a vital piece of infrastructure to grow the region's economy. I urge you all to vote in favor of rezoning the property already owned by Minnesota Power so we can move forward with the construction of the Namaeji Trail Energy Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shannon Forrest.
Hi, my name is Shannon Forrest. I live on Weeks Avenue in Counselor Grasky's district. I moved here to be closer to work. I love the area, and I want to continue to earn a living here. I'm a single mother with two kids and a union electrician with the IBW Local Two Forty-Two. I fully support Entech, as it would give me the opportunity to work right in my backyard. That means more time at home with my children, less time traveling for work, and less time worrying about childcare, which we all know is a scarcity around here. I'm asking the Planning Commission and the counselors to approve the rezoning and street vacation needed. There are a lot of families just like me that depend on this work. I asked the Planning Commission and the counselors to approve the rezoning. No, thank you.
Thank you. Casey Aronson, please.
Good evening, Mayor Payne, members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Casey Aronson. I am a business representative with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local One Thirty-Nine. Local One Thirty-Nine is a statewide construction union. We represent over eleven thousand men and women across the state of Wisconsin, many who live right here in Douglas County and many who live right here in the City of Superior. We are the men and women who operate heavy equipment on construction projects across the state, throughout the country, and in some cases, across the world. Local One Thirty-Nine, along with the other skilled construction trades, many that are here tonight, are the hard-working people who get out of bed in the morning, lace up their boots, and go to work. Many of the projects that we work together on help make our world a better place. The residents of the City of Superior benefit from the work that we do, such as having nice roads and safe bridges to travel on. We install sewer and water systems throughout the city, providing residents with clean drinking water and a clean way to discharge their wastewater. We build the schools for your children to go get an education at. We build the hospitals for you and your family to go to when you're not feeling well. We also work on energy projects such as pipelines, refineries, and power plants to provide a reliable source of energy for everyone. All of us use these sources of energy every day to heat our homes, fuel our vehicles, and to turn our lights on. The movement right now is to transition to clean energy. We are supportive of clean energy as well. In fact, we have hundreds of members throughout the state of Wisconsin that we have trained that are employed building solar farms and wind farms. With that being said, we also need safe and reliable energy, and that's why we are here tonight. On behalf of the membership of Local One Thirty-Nine, I am here to show our support for the Namaeji Trail Energy Center. This project will not, this project will provide work for hundreds of skilled tradesmen and women so that these workers can feed their families and pay their bills. Superior, Wisconsin, was built on industry, and what a compliment it would be to add a clean, burning power plant to the mix. I'm asking each and every one of you tonight to join us in supporting this project, which in turn supports hundreds of blue-collar workers and their families while while providing safe and reliable energy for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. With apologies, I'm struggling with the next name. I believe it might be Benny, starting with an S, of Homestead Drive. Who wouldn't mind saying your name, please?
Danny Stoll. So a little bit of background, I'm one of the owners of Belknap Electric, located just two blocks west of here. If I know a couple of you from different experiences. So we've been in business close to ninety years now, which in turn has provided a direct economic impact and measured hundreds of millions of dollars in this area. You might ask, why is that important? Simply put, you know, our small business has consistently provided stable employment for hundreds of electricians and support staff through the years. It's only made possible through sound management, aligning with proper governmental compliance. Now, these jobs, so to speak, are well-paying, with benefit packages that enrich our communities through continual reinvestment of our time, labor, and support of each other. I fully support Entech and believe I can speak with some level of expertise as an electrical contractor, especially considering today, we've installed over two hundred solar arrays, EV charging systems, and and the like. Again, you know, why is this important? We need all forms of energy. We need them to prosper, continue our standard of living we've come to enjoy that we've worked so hard for. Now, that being said, I believe Entech has the wherewithal and knowledge to complete this much-needed project such a manner that helps alleviate our energy concerns in this area. This area has robust considerations in place to regulate, monitor construction, which will mitigate any potential residents' concerns. And I would remind all the members, just to please remember, a key role of the governance model that you are beholden to requires you to develop sound policies and decisions, not necessarily to your individual desires, but rather to glean all pertinent information from all stakeholders, constituents, and the appropriate governmental personnel. I think I can speak on behalf of most people in here, and you can see the turnout, that this project has broad community support. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanner Carlson is next, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tanner Carlson, and I'm a first-year electrician apprentice in the IBW Two Forty-Two. I reside in Superior, and Ruth Ludwig is the counselor for my district. In fact, she's even my next-door neighbor. As an apprentice, Entech could provide me with a stable income, countless opportunities to learn, and the privilege of being able to work right by my home. As a citizen of Superior, I think it would be not only beneficial to me, but to my community overall. A vote against Entech does not represent my views or my best interests, and I respectfully request for Counselor Ludwig to consider supporting Entech. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce Anderson is next, please.
Hey, I'm Bryce Anderson, and I support the NTC project. I have two young kids. I'm a resident of Superior, Wisconsin. I'm District Eight. I don't know who the District Council is for that, but we hope that you support the NTC project, and thank you very much.
Dan Olson is next. Thank you.
I like when these guys use their cell phones and all that stuff. I'd mess it up. Mayor, staff, counselors, we've been here a few times, right? And I've sat over there, so I know what your job is. And your job is to look at and weigh in with all aspects of what we're looking at doing here today. I support this project for a number of reasons. I believe it's a safe project that is proposed to be built in an area that is surrounded by industrial neighbors. You all know, if you don't, nine out of ten city council districts have some sort of commercial or industrial business in them. And that's important to what we've done in the past. And in the history of our city is based on the industry that is, was created long before us. The mills, the coal, the taconite, everything, the railroads. The infrastructure that is around this area is set to be advanced. And I I struggle with the fact that we're considering not approving this. Look at the development that could be coming in the future. If this doesn't get approved, and if it's for something that I don't know about, shame on me. But look at the development that could be coming to this city. We've got a landfill that is slated to close, and we've got a coal dock that is slated to close. And there's a million dollars of revenue that's going to come in to this community. So I urge you to make sure that we we get all the facts and all the figures. I welcome you to to reach out to any one of us. And I know that you've got questions for the Minnesota Power people too, and I'm not going to touch that. We have a workforce that is ready to go to work. We have a group of supporters. You can look behind me. You can look on Facebook. You can look at whatever you want to look at, what we did today. We brought our community together. This is your Superior, right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Craig Sutherland.
All right. Unlike Dan, I need to, I need to read my notes. Mayor Payne, common council, thank you for having me today. Thank you for letting all of us speak. I am a resident in the Second District, Counselor Van Siggel, right down the street from you. I talked to my neighbors. The summer's been kind of a warm one, so everyone's been kind of active out in the neighborhood. Asked them about Entech. I never had one, not a single one, tell me that they did not support this. That's just my opinion from what I gathered from the neighborhood there. The proposed site, when you go into this area, is perfect for Entech. Right across the street from Entech, I would see you have hundreds of millions of gallons of oil sitting in tanks there. There's going to be no water company that's to come and bottle water in that area from that river. This area is ready for manufacturing. It is zoned for that area. As a business owner in the district, I owned businesses throughout several just counselors' areas. Counselor Johnson, Elm, Ladine, I understand economic economics. I understand economic, economics. I understand how important it is, this project, to our community. Some of our city councils here have businesses that rely on the community spending money. This is what this will do. As one person says, it's a shot in the, in the arm for economics in our city. One person that just spoke once told me, $1 earned is spent seven different times in this community. $1 billion is not gonna put a multiplier in front of that. Imagine what that would do and how that trickles down to the City Council, to the city, from the state getting the sales tax to the county getting it. It's a domino effect that we'll never really understand the numbers. Now I'm gonna talk about something that I've been, when I was on City Council here for three terms, diving into budgets and understand the taxes. The city can only tax us so much money. Think of a glass of water filled to the brim. Once you overfill that brim, the water overspills. That right there, the city can't do that, the state sets a level. That glass of water is filled by property tax and business tax. The more business tax that's paid, that's poured into that water, it's poured in that cup, the less the property owner has to pay. All right? According to our budget, 12 and a half million dollars is generated from personal, or from, I'm sorry, from property tax, not personal property tax. Property tax. At $600,000 influx, $700,000 influx from Entech, that would save the tax base nearly 6%. On average, that's about $300 per home per year. That could put your kids in more sports, that can buy you two more dinner, or, uh, cartfuls at the grocery store, whatever it is, that's huge, and that's what we need. We can finally see we can lower tax by about 5 to 7% in my estimates, according to the budget. Thank you very much.
Next is Heidi Sore.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Sore, and we live on Kerwin Road, just south of Superior. I have lived here all my life, and I am asking you to support the proposed Entech project for that exact reason. We have a set of one-year-old twins, and we own a horse boarding stable in Superior. My husband and I are both construction workers that started out as apprentices. We are excited to have an opportunity like Entech, where we may be able to work in Superior and be home with our children every night. This job could provide up to three years of work for us times two. So when the Plan Commission makes its decision on the zoning change and street vacation, please, as a full City Council, support and vote for the construction of Entech. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, might be Gerald Osgood, Osgood? Thank you. Donald Smith, then?
Mayor, City Councilors, thank you again for this opportunity to talk tonight. I think it's very important. What I, I didn't write a big speech, uh, you heard some great speeches in front of me. What I'd like you to do tonight is really look at all the people behind me that showed up after working all day at work. These people care. My dad always told me, this world's run by the people that show up. I'd like you to look around and see who showed up tonight. Thank you, and I hope you support this project.
Thank you. Next is Weston Morris.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Weston Morris, thanks for this chance to speak. I reside in the First District of Superior, 5518 Banks Avenue. I live here with my daughters and my wife. I'm a union electrician through I B W 242, and I am concerned in the direction the city is going. Being a man of labor, when I see a problem, I fix it. With that being said, I just announced a little bit ago that I'll be running for City Council in the First District as a writing candidate this election cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Bukovich is next.
Mayor, councilors, I just wanted to give a little update on how many letters of support have been sent in on behalf of Entech. As of right now, there's just over 7,700 letters of support that have been sent to the mayor and each counselor. That is total, that equates to just over 700 individuals. Because one individual that signs onto that sends a letter of support to the mayor and each counselor. I've been hearing rumors that all these, um, letters are just going to our trash, we're not seeing them, not getting any. So I just wanna provide some hard numbers. As of this morning, in Ladene's district, there's 36 constituents that sent letters of support to you. In Vansick's district, there was 36 constituents as well. In Gunnar Moffett's, there was 14. In Sweeney's, there was 36. In Vansick's, there was 36. In Elm's, there was 14. In Ludwig's, there was 12. In Herrick's, there was 27. In Johnson's, there was 22. And in Graskie's, there was 17. For a total of 248 Superior residents who, who took the time to submit letters of support to each and every one of you, and if that does not show, uh, public support for the project, I don't know what does. We still have a couple more months to go, and I anticipate these numbers to increase drastically. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Joshua Dick.
Thank you, I'm Joshua Dick. I just wanted to ask you guys to, to really consider supporting this project. It means, it doesn't just mean life-changing money for me and my family. It means life-changing money for the entire community. It's gonna go through all veins of this, of this organism that we call Superior, Wisconsin. And it's not just about the money. It's about, as some of the other people have spoken before, it's about being home with our families. It's about working in our own backyards. I don't know if you understand, these, the level of these projects don't come around often. But when they do, we normally have to travel for them, which means months and years away from our loved ones. We wanna be home, we wanna be working in Superior, we wanna be home with our families at the end of the night, not down the road somewhere else. And this is gonna be big, mean big things for Superior. The, the, this is a building block that is going to cause Superior to, uh, grow in such ways I don't think that we quite understand yet, but we'll see. And I hope that every one of you support that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last person signed up is Dylan DeRoche.
Uh, good evening, my name is Dylan DeRoche. I'm a 22-year-old apprentice out of Local 11 Plumbers and Steamfitters. I'm also a Douglas County resident. Um, I'm here to show my support over the Entech project and what it means to me and my soon-to-come family. I do not have a wife or kids right now, but it is in the near future for me. And what Entech means for me is I can work years at home, and that's what I wanna do. You can ask any construction worker, anybody behind me, if they would rather work on the road or work at home and provide for their family, um, at home. Entech means a lot to me, and it would be good work experience as an apprentice to, to get that experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in public comment? Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Ashley Dick, my husband is Joshua Dick. Um, we live here in Superior, I've lived in Douglas County my whole life. And he's been out of town before, thankfully not very far, furthest was Grand Rapids. I don't like when he's away from home. I want him home, with me, with our family, not in some other place, working, not being able to see us. If I need something, he's here. If he needs something, being a diabetic, I can get to him right away. Not everybody is able to do that if you're out of town. I wouldn't know who to call to help him. So please, sincerely, think about supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in public comment? Counselors? Last call for public comment? If not, we have no further business and we are adjourned, thank you.